Uh naming the town paper.
Okay.
Uh yeah, in G two.
Second.
Second.
All right, moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Voice to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries four zero. Next up is the minutes from our previous meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the September eighth, twenty twenty five regular town council meeting.
I'll second with the Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Casiba to approve the September eighth, twenty twenty five regular town council meeting minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries four zero. Next item, citizen or council concerns. Citizen concerns? I don't know. Do you have a concern? I know you're a citizen, so what do you got?
Well, I wish your work address and then I think directed here.
Go for it, fire away.
Um, I know that my was caused one in the summer because I'm.
It's generally the way that we have it, did we have it? I thought we might have structured a little bit during the summer, but I think it's normally structured the, oh, we can't really measure sewage usage. So what we've done is we've split it so that we use your water usage as a stand in for the sewer usage. So in the summer, you're absolutely correct that your water is going into grass, going to the aquifer. In the winter, if somebody's running extra water, it's usually going down because there, so we've kind of split it. So you're not actually paying that full cost of the water. It's just our way of kind of managing a way to measure the cost.
Well, would I use more water, but I do not use any more sewage, keep it by myself.
That's true, but we would have to then have to change the entire town system. And since we don't measure sewage usage, that's the only measurement method that means we can use it by your water.
Don't you think that trial and obvious should be?
They could, but then the result would actually be.
Being a little bit different.
But then the result would be, it'd be higher in the winter then. So rather than amortizing it across the entire twelve months, we would then, to your point, say, oh, it's free in the summer, but higher in the winter. So by spreading it, spreading that cost, if you will, across the twelve months, yeah, you're paying, you and I are paying for water that goes into the lawn. But then you're not paying the full cost of what it costs during the winter when it goes down the. So, a lot of people, a lot of people do.
And then my next one is, is that I have the coins automatically put on there in my checking account. And for some reason, that will take seventy-five dollar payment on what was to be paid. So therefore in terms of twenty-five extra dollars for late fee, but I was not aware until about this. And it shouldn't have been. Because it should come out one hundred percent out of my account, but there's something in my system. And I talked to the other office desk. And she said, bring that phone, just like, yeah, I want to give you five dollars in case you charge anybody coming out.
Okay, that happened in the past.
Yeah, in this instance, I'm willing to waive it. Is that, you comfortable with that?
Yes.
I mean, this is, this is an administrative detail that's not pertaining to the fact that you can pay your bill on time, so.
Oh, no, I think I go on time, actually, you're.
Yeah.
But it didn't take the full amount out, which I, it was, I, I don't know if it's reaching the system.
Yep.
You know, is there numerous other ones out there or what?
Well, that dangerous vendor town of Pinedale might be trying to take more money than they're supposed to, so your bank's probably protecting you.
No, it's in the system of, uh, where you're getting it.
Oh.
It's not, okay.
On our side or your side, okay.
I know.
Are you comfortable with that? Do we need to pass the resolution or?
Yeah, it sounds, it's just.
Okay, remind me of your last name.
Margaret Gillette.
Gillette.
Yes.
Okay. Can I have a motion to waive the late fee for Margaret Gillette on the?
Which, yeah.
No, no. To make that motion.
On what month is the bill?
This month, nine, one to nine thirty.
Okay, we make the motion that we waive the bill for Margaret Gillette.
Seven, for.
Waive the levy.
Perfect.
Well, second.
I'll pay that, but I'll pay the seven fifty sewer.
That's right. Yeah. Well, and then, yeah. And then it just turns into something more expensive to see, I'm just making sure.
And then I have a couple of things.
God, excuse me.
Oh.
Hold on, it's been moved by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilwoman Casiba to waive Margaret Gillette's late fee for the month of September water and sewer billing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries next.
No.
Um, one of the chairs has put a speed bump in an alley.
Let's get another ten. No, I hear you. Uh, there's a couple of streets. Uh, we'd have to look at it. You can, we can make the request and then we'll just put in our list of things to look at. We have currently have a rubber one that we kind of like nail down into the street that's useful.
Right.
We really need to get a couple of those, cause, but alleys are complicated.
What is the bridge across the street from mostly my boss? And they get, you know, the UPS and FedEx, and they don't necessarily speak, but um, other people throughout the town use that like it's a street. And they.
Yep.
Down actually, I don't know, runway.
Well, we'll take a look at it. Abe, watch and note the address and then we can discuss it.
Huge pothole there, I think, please.
Oh, there's a couple of huge potholes.
Yeah, that's not enough. Oh, okay.
But they just, they come back all the time.
Yeah.
Potholes multiply like rabbits. Yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a busy alley.
Well, that alley there is one of the hard ones, because the alley, if you were to grade it properly, you'd fill up the water. People, some of those buildings are very low, so a lot of them just plug in the back door.
That runs into like the neighbor's garage and things like that.
Kind of, you're gonna have.
I'm, yeah, I'm usually on it, my bad.
Right, I was the outside of my driveway, I don't remember. I don't mind that so much as the speed, but you, I have grandkids.
All right, well, let's note the address and then Abe and I'll discuss it and we'll get, yeah. Like the.
All right, thank you.
Done.
We got behind me, so these, we're good.
Is that it?
No.
Oh, good.
She's got a list.
You didn't say four, you said one or two, but go ahead.
Um, the town food lot, maybe have a, are we cooked down?
Yes. Power's coming and we'll be putting poles in and eventually putting lights eventually on the road. We'd like to get like the ice rink in there and some other stuff, but the power is.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the uh, update on that project is we got our final kind of designs for already, and they were gonna go out and stake them this week. Um, where the power pedestals are gonna go, or holes for the light poles are gonna go. Um, Kevin has ordered all the light poles and those are coming through and we're working with an electrician to make sure we put the right side of the conduit in the ground. And it will be contracted with an electrician this fall, with the meter setup and all the conductors in. Our goal is to have it, it set up for this fall, winter. Uh, but primarily to get the light and the picnic tables noise, so there's at least some sort of a light center, if you will, for the, for the winter. And then the, the whole next scenario would be to landscape on the front portion of that and try to at least have it kind of landscaped and lit with picnic tables. And then working power on the.
Awesome.
On three stations, if you.
Of those, like.
Trailer stations, we're gonna be like.
And two and three.
Uh, the three are gonna be right behind where the fences currently, so you can pull in at an angle behind the fence. The fence portions of the fence are being come out, a lot of people will walk down in there and then the fence will kind of leave the common area for people to, to eat in. Kind of like it is right now, but you'll be able to park on the other side of the fence.
Uh, so the power pole will be, will there be more than just one power pole?
Three.
Oh, so.
There'll be three, fifteen.
One on each.
Yep.
Side.
Yep, one on each site for a food truck, so there could be three.
Fence, one on that side and then one on that side.
One.
Okay, okay.
Thank you for using it, by the way.
I was just kind of curious who that was, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm correcting saying our lease ends, we currently have the back third leased out. The idea is that that back third will be used for food trucks next year.
That's correct.
Being on the front, two thirds, two and a little.
Okay, great. That sounds awesome.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so my next one.
Well, it's fine, it's great, go for it.
And figuring we'll do them all at once while I'm thinking about it. Uh, the tent lot?
Yep.
And I don't know what else you call it.
Two ten, no, what is it? South Jackson Park. I always use the address, but I agree.
What do you call it?
It's like two forty south or two ten south, Pat Jackson, I think it's, South Jackson Park.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And all of the stuff that we have are so beautiful, looks good, and that thing was terrible. You know, what's the possibility of, you know, like that up, make it unified and possibly a restroom, would you, the shower? Cause it's a tent lot.
Well, currently we're actually looking and we're in discussions with another engineering firm and the DEQ Brownfield project, as well as some other developers to turn that into an affordable housing, how, a lot full, affordable housing. So we have preliminary plans that have about sixty houses going on to it.
That's hot.
Yep.
Oh.
Yep. So it probably won't end up to be that dense once we're done, but when I was looking at, cause we, I was suggesting they pull out one of the buildings, put a playground in the one corner. And, and now that we actually have a couple of developers doing some deep restrictions, we may not need as many as we were looking at originally. Um, but affordable housing is a, affordable housing, not attainable housing. A major, major issue. So that's one of our few lots that we've looked at. It's a residential area, so it kind of ties in, and if it's developed nice, it could turn into a nice little neighborhood. So not inclined. Yeah, not inclined to spend a lot of money on it till we know exactly the direction we're going with it, so. But you're not wrong. I bike by it, I'm like, you're not wrong.
So that's on that, and it's still discussing.
Yeah, we'll probably have a clear line of sight on it through before summer begins.
And the next one?
Wow, okay, come again.
I think it's been.
Look at that.
Um.
You're in a contention with Max now on the number of. I know, that's what I'm saying. Over to you, you're just hit the heart, you're at about five, so.
Um, the fee for Airbnb, that's all the same.
Yes.
And you still have to have a yearly inspection?
Yes.
Right? There is not a half year price for Airbnb.
There is not.
Is that possible? Cause like myself, I know there are others as well, but like myself, I only do for five or six months in the winter exit. Cause we're all.
Part of the problem is we pay licensing fees for other software and things that follow everything, and that's an annual fee. So we have to kind of try to recuperate our fees that we're spending to track that. But it's something we can think about, and it's not, not saying no, just giving a reason for why we've done it so far.
Right, I'd like to bring that up though, and the possibility of something in that nature.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then also it is run from, what is it, April to April? Can it be like a roller here instead? Cause like myself, I mean, I only do from about the middle of November through the middle of April. So if I need later or in one of them or.
Our fiscal year is in July first, so if you were to do what you're suggesting, then your licensing fee would actually be three months, three months in each fiscal year, which might be more problematic, but.
It's kind of.
I said, we can look at it, talk about it.
Okay.
If that's, yeah. Not impossible. It might be a no still, but.
Just because I don't make a ton of money off of Airbnb, I'm not trying to, like, basically just helps you pay the bills through the winter when you're not here.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, and some days they're kind of. Okay, I think that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's funny. Hey, just came in, just hit them all, like, good.
I love it.
Yep.
We see her coming again, we're gonna know.
She's got a list. No, thank you. Oh, the speed.
Yeah, every time I heard it, we're figuring out. We actually have a lot of people who want speed bumps around town, but it's, it's just.
It's like fifty fifty, you either love them or you hate them.
Yep.
That probably tells you who's slow.
Cause you don't like them, then what's your problem?
Might have a left foot. Might have a left foot.
Um, all right, any other citizen concerns? Council concerns? Okay. Hmm, all right, uh, visiting delegations, sheriff, good to have you.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Councilman. So, um, you guys have the monthly flow for August, so incidents went down, um, therefore our, we could do a little bit more traffic. So citations and warnings went up, um, that's, that's normal for the time, for the time of year. Um, I will, yeah, the citations, half of those were superintendents on, um, on Pine Street even. So, um, we did know, so more spread between Martha Franklin and Martha Lake. Um, start, we'll kind of keep an eye out for speeding vehicles through the alleys. So alleys are hard to patrol, um, unless we actually see something, but we'll.
I feel like if he just parked it, like, maybe our heat is a lot higher. Ooh.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, I think by next summer, we bring that to such discussion for the final, um, approval at the town council of turning our alleys one way off of Pine Street. Simplifying the site, you know, a lot of people do, exit Pine Street often.
Those streets weren't.
It's all.
I think it's great, yeah, especially with the wood and some of the alleys, yeah, two vehicles, especially if you have a UPS truck or, I think, you're not gonna get by, so. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Um, yeah, other than that, I really don't have any upcoming news or anything else, so.
It almost looks like you got sleep in the last couple of weeks, since that's.
A little bit. Yeah.
I'm happy to see.
Yeah, fires, fires are, so, yeah, not under control, so.
Although we appreciate everything you're doing and your staff is doing, so.
Thank you, yeah.
Any questions for the sheriff? Uh, I'm gonna remind everybody, just because on October second is gonna be the first responders, Nathan, you know, appreciation barbecue. Um, it's always great when people show up and appreciate our, I guess, probably pulled pork or something.
Yeah, uh, Henry emailed the sheriff's office.
Howard, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Good, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Come, it'll be fun. Thank you, sir. It'll be inside the love it room.
Okay.
Yeah, it kind of starts chilling off. Um, we used to do it in the park, but then, you know, everybody had something going on and just trying to coordinate that just became much more difficult. And then it just seems increased later and later in the year. It wasn't September, now under October, but, yeah, well, it was something. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Um, I think everything is fairly self-explanatory, the Joe soda ash, liquid soda ash, lot achievement salt, uh, the Lampay encroachment agreement on four forty Meadowwood, and the Wood encroachment agreement on four eighty-four, and then the school district encroachment agreement on sixty River, and then the two tap grant amendments. Does anybody have a question that you would like to explain, or anybody like anything pulled, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. Moved by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilman Casiba to approve the consent agenda as published. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries four zero. All right, next item on the agenda, other town business, first up is, excuse me if I write this down, is the Willow Whisper condominium building permit discussion. Everybody will be happy to know that this is our only condominium in the town of Pinedale. So. And Chad, I forget your name, I'm sorry.
How, H O W E L.
Yes, How, within that. So Abe, you wanna go ahead and begin the discussion?
You know, trying to share up here, some, yes.
You did guarantee that it would work.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I did, I'm like.
I keep screaming.
Yeah, I guess I just had the screen work, that's fair.
There it is.
All right. Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, so the town of Pinedale has received two building permit applications for, uh, their carports. The exact definition or exact details of those are still kind of being determined by the carport to park a vehicle under. I believe size for two vehicles is the goal. Um, the condominium association is the only condominium association in the town of Pinedale. So really came down to trying to understand what we can legally, not legally permit. So if I were to select this on the GIS, um, you'll see there's nine owners in the condominium association, two of which are present tonight. And the rest of the area is called common area of the condominium association, which is an undivided interest of the nine owners in that lot. So to permit something here, we have to have business, or we have to have homeowners approval, all nine of them. And so I've met with Ed, I'm like, can I permit something, can I not, what does the code allow us to do? And inside of the common area to permit something, what the town would need option one is to have, um, uh, the common area can be permitted with the permission of all nine owners. So any of these permits that come in will have to have a letter of support signed by the owner of each of the nine units. It says, I understand what's being built and where it's being built, and I approve of that as an owner of the common area, one of nine. And to be approved, they would have to have unanimous decision, all nine owners would have to agree to that common area improvement. The other thing that exists inside the condominium association is called limited common area, LCA. Limited common area is defined right now in their plat, um, is only the porch. So on this structure here, the back porch and the front porch is defined in the plat are limited common areas to, I believe this is unit one. Um, and I, I don't have a map confirming, but Mr. Mayor, you have a map sitting on your desk, you can start that. We'll see it labeled LCA dash one, LCA dash two, D three. What an LCA is, or a limited common area, is it allows this condominium to create. Basically define exclusive rights on a certain area within the common area for use of that unit owner. And so what could be allowed, the second alternative that they would have to permit this, is they could amend their articles of, I don't know, articles of condominium? Articles of association?
Yeah. Association agreement.
Yeah, they can amend those articles and define these as LCAs, and then define what can and can't happen inside of those LCAs, which would allow the town to amend accordingly with however that was defined. But without exclusive use and, and the ownership within, uh, we need one of those two routes to be able to permit those. So that's kind of the first part of the discussion. I've met with Mayor Murdock and our attorney, Ed Wood, to, to kind of get to that. And that's what we believe is the two legal avenues. Ed, do you have anything to add on there?
No, it's, I believe, it's an undivided one night interest that each unit has in the common area. So if they're wanting to do something in that common area, they have to have unanimous decision. And the other, other step that you're talking about is designating an area of the common area to be exclusive, uh, that would take an amendment.
So I'll jump in real quick, cause I think council needs to know that, um, that is currently zone commercial. And so there are commercial operations going on within there. Um, there are probably forty plus parking spots overall in this area. But I understand that each owner has like two parking spots that's kind of allocated to them, which I think is the intent to do a carport over two of them, so that particular owners could have a carport and protect their car against the weather. Um, and so that is one element, so there are more than obviously eighteen parking spots here. Um, and the other thing I was gonna mention is, um, they have also recently amended, I think it's amendment two, where originally it was limited to two or three units could be used as commercial. The entire condominium project can actually be commercial at this point, so they amended an amendment two. So just so people understand, that could eventually turn into a little shopping complex, for example, just, I'm not, enough, it's not going to. On this, but the council needs to know that's a commercial piece of property, it could eventually become something in cause tomorrow. So, Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Howell, does that make sense, the two options that Abe put down?
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
Okay, and, and I think.
It could be a hybrid, they could go one route and get the nine letters for that.
And then come back.
And then come back and work through your LCAs this winter or whatever.
The other.
That's probably the option we're gonna take, is just, uh, you know, immediately drag in Mrs. Howell's.
Okay.
And that will, will cover shop in the next day, and then move in, and I'll create a new amendment, or get a little calendar now, designate parking spots as the new common area.
Yeah, you just have to allocate that, right, exactly, so. I just wanted to make certain, cause you know, it, it is, it is a unique situation in that we have the common land that we have to protect. And so there are seven other people whose property we fight, we have to protect there, but at the same time, we want to respect that. So you have two options. Um, I, I think it sounds like the easiest would be to quickly amend within your own association and allocate that. And then in that case, you would come in, Mrs. Howell, for example, and make the application for a building on the carport, on the two allocated places that would be included in the site plan that we have, for instance. And I'm sure Chad, who's fully versed in all of this, can help do that building application, right?
Right, so her building application, we're hoping to submit with the.
Okay.
And then mine, and. Uh, on the unit number, uh, hide to the side of the smallest, uh, the four blocks there.
Right.
And then we'd like to submit a building grant, so probably those two, mine excluded, will be, uh, submitted with a back signature. And mine probably cut off till spring, have the amendment application.
Okay. Um, the only, do you wanna go to the second point?
Yeah, I mean, eventually, we're wrapping one conversation at a time, so is there anything else on that?
No, I think we're good there. Okay, the second piece is the piece of information that they're gonna need as well.
Yeah, the second question that staff has, and we've reviewed this head, uh, what setbacks do we apply? So this is zone commercially, is being used for a mixed use residential, commercial application. Um, right now, I believe six, if not seven of the units are used for residential, I mean, two or three. Is this whole complex up here, commercial?
Three, three are commercials, the last technically phase two of those.
Yeah, okay, and then the phase one are all being used for pseudo-residential. So the, um, I think so, the commercial, commercial setbacks on the front, it's, it's butted by four public streets. So it has four front yards by definition. In commercial zoning, the setbacks are zero feet. Um, to have residential inside of commercial zoning, um, you're supposed to honor the, to use for higher and better use, you can in town code. But if you were to buy a commercial lot in town and build a single family residence on it, you would have to meet residential setbacks. So Mr. Casiba is a good example, he owns a grand apartment house, it's in zone commercial, but the setbacks do not meet current residences. If he would ever convert to a business, that building could never go back to residential use without some sort of variation. Uh, however, mixed use residential commercial, which is a C U P, uh, conditional use permit inside of commercial, allows, uh, has its own setbacks, which is zero front and then five side yards. Uh, there is no side yard here, so we'll be still looking at the front. I just need to know what to apply, I think because it's being used for residential and commercial purposes, the most logical way to do it is to treat it, um, that it's been approved through a plat with the town, and that it should be approved as mixed use residential commercial, allowing those zero foot setbacks as mixed use residential commercial. That would be my recommendation, but I'm kind of bending around through the rules, trying to find a target, and so I wanted to seek your guidance on this.
Yeah. Any thoughts? I'm good with the real place, so.
I'm okay with that approach too. Just its own unique spot, I mean, that whole piece of property from hill to canal, it's just.
Yep.
Super unique.
So to be clear, Mr. Mitchell, um, when you do bring your application in, will the site plan actually, uh, which parking spots are the one? It would be ideal if you could kind of start laying it out for the other one as well, so we can get our head wrapped around it. But then that will be what's approved for those two, two particular parking spots for the carport. And then with the zero foot setback, that gives you the idea how big a carport can be, obviously, so you're good to go. So do we, I don't think we need to take a vote on this, cause this is just an action on your part and.
You need a motion ahead or more?
I don't think it's motion, it's just the staff just made a correction from council.
Yep, so everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
I'm ready to commit.
That's not it, Amy, everybody said yes. Mr. Mitchell, Mrs. Howell, any other final comments, questions?
I'm grateful, but maybe I haven't kept worried about shoveling snow all the time.
I will say that when we were talking about it, we were, Ed and Abe and I were saying that somehow or no matter what, unless it's actually closed on all four sides, you're probably gonna start to shovel some snow, cause it just seems like the wind carries it everywhere. But it'll make your life easier and that's better. No problem, thank you.
So I think just a little bit of direction for me, I, uh, so I'm gonna depend on submitting, resubmitting tax building permit tomorrow, maybe just in time, with just the non-signatures, what, what kind of legal description do you need? I don't know how to describe the two parking spots directly in front of every unit legally, but I can use more room. but I can use nor room and anything, whatever you want. Or I'll use that description of the map that Abe showed for Mrs. Howell's unit five sixty-six. Unit number three or whatever on the condominium designation.
Well, it's going to be in the plat, certainly. It can be indicated obviously on the drawing, but you have to probably-
But for them, like to describe where her carport is going to be, it's going to be two spots directly in front of unit five.
Right.
Is that enough legal to search it, Ed?
No, because you go one, two, three, three, at least three spots in front of there. I think all their site plan, you're going to have to designate some type of measurement so we know where it's at. Is it the north easterly?
So if, so that map exactly where the common area is, sorry, Abe, if you move closer to the storage, the parking adjacent to the storage doesn't exist. That's landscaping. It's trees, it's palm trees and bottles.
Yeah, it is. I'm looking.
It doesn't exist. The first available spot, the next spot. And then the singing goes for the spots closest to the highway. There's landscaping in two of those spots. So those don't actually exist. There's actually six, basically six spots available in front of there. It doesn't follow the platters because they somewhere along the line, it landscape stuff. Seeing those are unit numbers with large landscaping in front of there where they're calling the parking spaces. Yeah, there you go. You can see that.
I can't wait.
There's roughly seventy-six feet.
Or it's not.
Just a question here. Where does the, where does the owner of the north easterly, east of there, where do they park?
They park in the, right there around on Canal Street. There's a little parking area parked out there.
I think parking is what it won't do, but I just-
Well, again, technically where they park and where we'll get to in our S2A vision is we'll designate either which is going to be with each unit. And what it's going to come down to is there will be two spots designated per unit directly in front of those. So seventy-five feet long and her car park residence is going to be twenty, twenty-four feet wide. So it'll be two twelve parking spots, twenty feet.
Well, I would defer to engineer.
How do I, how do you describe that to me?
My small slider down here, but somehow you're going to be designated for your site plan where that thing is going to be built. Correct. Everyone has a figure, but it's got to be designated. I have an idea. We should go over there and around. The permit's going to be issued around. And anybody using the, you need to amend that, but you know, there. Descripting wise, where it can be described and located.
I mean, thinking it pretty simple, I would just, I would say from this property corner, how many feet down, set a property line, whatever it is, thirty-five feet, et cetera, to the approximate point of beginning of the structure.
Perfect.
Or a setback from a foot or two feet or however far you're setting it back from the setback, you know, whatever the case may be. That way it keeps it simple, but it's still clear for. And then you can just print that map and rob red box.
Rob red box, maybe you can measure it so we're together.
Council?
Well, my thought was just number the ones that are on the plat and then designate which sections are going to be used for that. But the measurements work too.
It doesn't actually exist as the plat does. How do I describe it to you in the recording?
Great. Okay. Is that good for everybody? Think that answers the problem?
Nine letters.
Nine letters.
The nine letters should include that description in like a little sketch of where it's going.
Yeah, not just that, hey, we agree with the carport. Thank you. Because otherwise we're going to come back and say, but today, you know, it's going to be there. I don't want to come back to you. So, yeah. Any other questions?
Why we have one?
That's right.
Only one?
If Ed had been in town with this one guy started building, where would you guys?
Probably not. All right. I think we're all good. Nine letters, site map, designation, et cetera, et cetera. Good to go. Zero foot setback. Hey, great. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Next item on the bit, on the agenda is the newspaper paper, newspaper paper of record, I guess. For the town of Pinedale, we do have this now with item G two as a resolution to vote on. As many of you know, the Pinedale roundup. Hey, Kelly's on here. That's fantastic. They did speak to the county commissioners. They did not agree to lower their column price per column inch despite county commissioners and myself, you know, asking the questions. But well, you know, they, I did have a good talk with Rob and Bob afterwards and they said, well, we can look at it later on. They are in theory, not in theory, they are technically non-compliant. To be very clear, the Pinedale roundup was not published for a week. And therefore they are not compliant under state statute on that side. If they had run the full fifty-two weeks and not missed, I think they did an electronic copy, but they didn't do a paper copy. And so technically they're out. However, the flip side of the, of the Wyoming state statute does designate that it should be somebody within the county. And so they qualify on that side. So and they actually have a higher execution rate than the other one that we're currently using, the Rocket Miner. So both the county attorney and-
Public county.
Yeah, right. So both the county attorney, the county commissioners and myself, although we really didn't get a chance to talk to Ed, but I think you and I talked about it briefly earlier. So we're all in favor of moving back to the Pinedale roundup, which is why you see the resolution as G two.
Do we have anything from the town perspective that would need to stay so it gets three consecutive or, you know, there's a lot of those property stuff. Just leave that, the Rocket Miner for one more.
Yeah, there's going to be a couple that keep on writing over that.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure we weren't missing.
That's right.
In the middle there. Cool.
Absolutely correct. So is, I'm assuming that everybody's good with that?
Yeah.
All right. We'll vote on it in G two. Because that'll be a resolution, right? All right. Next item is the cellular service provider recommendation. We are currently with Union Wireless and staff and everybody's struggling big time with this. So we are, Abe has priced it out and I'll let you pick it up, Abe, here at this point.
Yep. Yeah, we've just been having issues, Mr. Morning, council with dropped calls, calls marketing through dispatch calls in the middle of the night. End up just calling supervisors and going up the chain until they get the person they need. And the next day they say, hey, I'll call a guy, I can't even answer the phone. They don't have this call, they don't have nothing. And so we're now a really big problem with union connection as well as connection to landlines or from our union cell phones. So we've just hit the point where we're ready to move along. So we saw quotes from both T-Mobile and Verizon and accounts. Those are some rising new guys that's packet. It would be our recommendation with staff that the most cost effective and middle line solution would be going with T-Mobile for cellular provider in the town of Pinedale. There's a few other things in the, in our cell phones. I think we have, we have a handful of like smart phones and stuff that we for like little hotspot internet to instead of paying for an internet drop in, you know, location and that kind of stuff. We're hard to reach areas or backup internet, like the airports backup internet. If it fails over, it fails over to a hotspot. So we still have some in there to, yeah.
Abe, I didn't ask you this question when we talked about it, but what is the data plan comparing T-Mobile to Verizon?
Say that again?
The data plan?
It's all unlimited data. Is that what you're asking?
They're both unlimited?
Yes.
Okay. I prefer, I can be honest, but two thousand dollars more is hard to justify.
It's surprising, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, my biggest question like is, how is T-Mobile's coverage in the county? Because-
I have T-Mobile on my personal device. It's fine. I would say, I mean, nothing beats Union. If it's in Pinedale, Union does better than anything else, right? But you drive out of the falls, you don't even think it'll work, which is-
That's true.
Since I've had it, my T-Mobile, T-Mobile still works, Verizon works. There's several of us that have our personals on T-Mobile. Verizon is fine too. Verizon, I have a pretty competitive proposal together as well. I'm not terribly disappointed in any of those. I believe it was the difference of like per device, it was like twenty-nine dollars for T-Mobile a month. And it was like thirty-six or thirty-seven for Verizon. So certainly we would be, the, the task app was just trying to make the prudent decision. I think it will be fine. T-Mobile is past what we're starting as well, that power and the text can start works if they have emergency star link that allows some of those.
Yeah, that's true. Like I, my brother-in-law has T-Mobile and he's able to use it on the lake.
Sheriff, do you, if you were to recommend between T-Mobile and Verizon?
No, I mean, emergency services, what do you guys use?
AT&amp;T. First gen coverage, so we have priority. And the cost estimate they bring less than Verizon.
I thought, I thought Union use, was it AT&amp;T or T-Mobile's towers?
I think T-Mobile uses Verizon towers and I think AT&amp;T is Union towers.
Okay.
I think, I don't know. I get my phone.
I just always-
I haven't thought about this for a while.
We just, sorry, we just have the news.
Yeah, I know that. But is Verizon, is T-Mobile on Verizon or is T-Mobile on Union towers? That's what I thought. And AT&amp;T is over on Union.
That's the same.
That comes back to me, so.
Yeah, is Pinedale still out there?
I thought I saw some hail bounce.
I'm on my bike. Can't wait.
It'll be, it'll be open by then.
All right. So is everybody comfortable? I mean, I think, you know, I saving two thousand dollars and it's a covered, it's going to be defined. And I do know that they do use the Starlink, so AT&amp;T is not either of these two stuff.
Is there like a thirty day cancellation in case?
We don't like it.
Both come with-
Yeah, I'm saying like right away, yeah, but like right away, if you know, like, oh, this is actually isn't going to work for us. If there's a, an out.
So he said he would do delayed coverage for us, T-Mobile guys, so he could get everything transitioned on the account.
Okay. Okay. As long as there's that, I'd-
We have any five G towers?
Verizon's five G here.
Yeah, so T-Mobile, T-Mobile's five G.
All right, just pulling up a coverage map.
Yeah, there you go. I was gonna say, just to pick on which, they don't really zoom in on Pinedale very well. Big US map. Oh.
Yes, Spencer?
Just one note that having, I also use T-Mobile for my personal. When you're outside of town, where you're on the edge of T-Mobiles, it does drop over to Union's network. So it's sort of the best of both worlds in that sense of if we're, you know, a little bit outside of town, still in Sublet County where T-Mobile doesn't have a tower, but Union does, the phones will still work with much slower data. But you can get a call or text in or out on the Union network with the T-Mobile plan.
Okay. So everybody go with T-Mobile? Good? I have a motion. This is exciting. I've never used T-Mobile. I've used the others. Buy something different.
Move that we approve the move for Union Wireless to T-Mobile for cellular service for the town of Pinedale.
Second. Whoever.
Thanks.
Referee.
Move by Councilman Boyce, second by Councilman Swapper. He rarely gets to second to Councilman Boyce. That's why I asked you second there. He made a motion. Approve the move, Union Wireless, T-Mobile for cellular service for the town of for a cost of seven thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars, eighty-eight cents, thereabouts.
Per year.
Per year. All those in favor, please say aye. As opposed, motion carries four zero. All right, great. Next item, KPNA hanger scope review. Oh, we're having fun. Wes is on the phone. We're talking some fun stuff, guys. I just got to say, I can't wait. There's a lot of things we'll talk about down the road. I travel around the state. I don't know. But just as a side note, as the president of WAM, I ended up traveling. I've hit everybody except Thermopolis in region six slot next week. And I sit in these meetings and I'm like, wow, Pinedale's really together. Not that the other towns don't, please don't do that otherwise.
Oh, yeah. Kelly's online now.
YouTube.
You can go watch you.
I'm now going to have a man of lander shoot me out, but anyhow, all right.
Comes down with state daily.
Air Hydrolife. Moving on.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, council, I'll introduce and then turn the discussion over to Wes to kind of put you guys make the decisions that you need to make tonight. We have received from Ardua and schematic designs report for the KPNA hanger. The most notable piece in here is the discussion regarding preliminary pricing on doing a twelve thousand square foot hanger versus a, we'll just use the term larger, fifteen thousand square foot is what we used in the bid and the quote here. But anything over twelve thousand requires fire suppression to be installed at the airport. And so this report that we received, based on the information that we had in our last meeting placing the hanger, this is the follow-up to that. And so Ardua has created a cost estimate for the two hangars. And I will give, so just for your guys' note, option A is the twelve thousand square foot hanger has a total construction cost of two million dollars, two million fifty-three thousand is the estimated cost. And then option, and I'm sorry, that's the hanger plus four hundred and thirty-nine thousand site work. Fourteen totals, two point six five six million dollars, that's twelve thousand square foot hanger. Option B, which would be the fifteen thousand square foot hanger with fire suppression. I gotta get down a little bit further here. Maybe I went by it. Wes, what page am I looking for? I just zoom past him.
Are you looking for the cost?
Yep, the cost summary between the-
The master summary is page nineteen.
The page?
Nineteen.
Which is one oh one.
I was just gonna say, I was like-
Three. So I have it up on the screen now. Option A, there's about two point five million. Option B, the bigger hanger would be three point two six million on our current estimates right now. There's obviously ways to increase and decrease this cost. We haven't went through value engineering at this point or anything of that nature. But regardless, we still have about eight hundred thousand in funding for this. The rest of this is funded out of, from the town right now. We have walls doing additional funding, but none of those are guaranteed avenues at this point in time. We have spoken to some of our enlarged clients out at the airport. I can tell you that we had this discussion on the placing originally. It's like some of these larger clients, when I say larger clients, we're looking at commercial type, not commercial activity as far as airport goes, but a flex jet or a net jet or a big charter company. They look at hangar space based on their largest jet. And if their largest jet cannot fit, they're really not that interested. I can tell you right now that Flex Jet just lost twenty thousand square feet of hangar space in Centennial, Colorado. And Western America is short on hangar space. It is, it's cold here, it's snowy here, and there's not enough hangar space. They called us last week looking for what hanger we could provide. They don't have anything to provide at this point in time. They're very, they are very excited about the opportunity with greater opportunities, but obviously you're looking at a three million dollar price tag to make that happen. What I'm looking for is a decision from council of, are we going for option A or option B? And Wes and his team can build that. So Wes, anything I missed?
I think you've covered it pretty well, Abe. The only thing I'd add in is that the estimated cost is pretty comprehensive. There's a lot of detail backing up those numbers if you go through that report. I do want to also draw attention to the fees for the design team, those greedy engineers also asking for, for money as part of this. But if you look at option A, if you factor all that in and we're expecting kind of some pre-construction costs that come with the C Mar, the general contractor, that'll come on very early in design. Looking about two point eight seven million all in. And then with option B, the larger hanger, three point seven million all in. Like Abe said, we got about eight, about eight hundred thousand, the final number to be determined when they announce the next fiscal year's AIG funds. But about eight hundred thousand or so that we, with the FAA that's available. And like Abe said, we're going to look for other avenues to alleviate that burden. But also just recommend the town be prepared for the, for the remainder of that bill. So option B is of course the fire- So option B is of course the fire suppressed hit option where we have to add a holding tank, um, that is going to be prepared to provide fire suppression through that larger hangar. Uh, if you recall, last time we discussed, we also, we can kind of centralize that. So other hangars, uh, future hangars can pull off of that. And that would also be a benefit, just, you know, with the location being as far as it is outside of town, having a water supply, uh, source that of that size would be kind of just an overall benefit too. But yeah, happy to dive into anything in any more detail that we may need to.
I think, you know, Councilman Swafford and I, we shared notes, and that's where we're sitting here for. And I, I think one of the things that Wes or Abe that's worthwhile, um, because I'm watching this Ms. Gillette out there, her eyes are like, what? Um, like, and but I think what would be important to note is the smaller hangar doesn't take the larger aircraft. The larger hangar does, especially with the fire suppression. What kind of ROI are you looking at for both projects? And I know we've.
We have the forecast, we have to really look at it, but it's not unreasonable to think that this hangar could generate a half million dollars a year.
The larger one.
Um, the larger hangar. Uh, so an ROI, uh.
Six years.
Six, uh, we'll just call it six to 10 years, which is a pretty good rate on, um, return on investment for the town of Pine Dale. I can tell you someone like Flex Jet, if we are successful in them, it wouldn't just be a contract of three or $400,000 a year, you know, to maybe lease the hangar, but now you're talking the jet fuel sales and everything that comes along with that. You're talking, if they're bringing five or six jets a night to put in a hangar, you're talking 12 hotel rooms every night throughout the winter. You're talking all of those things, restaurants getting those, because those pilots, those jets are flown by two pilots each. Each of those pilots gets their own room. They all go out to eat. There's a lot of business development that comes from the airport or something like this. Land, um, probably defares exceeds possibly even the revenue of the airport.
And then for the next 30 or 40 years, we get.
Yes. And the life of a hangar like this should be upwards of 50 years, the lifespan of the building itself. So it is expensive. Um, however, I do believe, and I'm not saying on year one we have it there, but I do know everybody who flies a jet in, they all want hangar space. And the bigger jets are calling us asking us, Western America is short on space. Uh, we happen to live in maybe the most opportune place to put this on because Jackson is so overrun right now that there's 40 or 50 jets parked up at tarmac and those guys want their jets in a hangar, especially if a big storm is coming in. They don't want to handle those top speeds.
And to also be clear is in the last two weeks, I've had discussions with the possibility of two other large hangars going in. So I don't, you know, not that we would be able to afford to do them, but there's been one who's talking about doing it themselves. And so there is.
Increasing amount of demand for space.
If we provided fire suppression up there too, the fire suppression can be used for our building, for the one next to it, the one next to it, the one next to it. So it does make it more, it makes the airport more business developed ready for a private.
Yeah, okay.
What was that?
Fire suppression, you can do that for buildings.
Well, what we have to do is we build a water tank that has like 5,000 gallons that could run for an hour and put out a jet fire, for example. So we can put the tank and then just pipe it to several different hangars. Obviously, if we had three fires at once, it would probably run out of water. But if we had one fire in this one or a fire over there, then we'd be able to offer fire suppression.
I mean, there's essentially like, I know we've just talked to like the highlights, but right there, I mean, there's three bonuses or three solid pros, in my opinion, for the bigger one.
For a truck.
Well, and look what's being staged out there still right now with the dollar fire. So, or at least they were a couple of days ago.
I'm just gonna, I mean, is there a, is there a good reason why we shouldn't go to the big one? Other than it's more money, but which is always a concern, not to say that that's not a concern, but.
I, I think the market is there. I think there's a demand for it. I think there's an amortization that pays this thing off.
Is there a timeline on, like, is the smaller one? And to be honest with you, I'm kind of pro the bigger one personally, but is there a timeline difference on construction? Wes?
Wes, I, I don't think the answer to that, I think the answer to that is no, I think.
It's either way, it's gonna be about the same.
And so we'll probably get the site over done and be waiting on the.
Just sitting and waiting, okay.
I don't know. Wes, is that accurate?
No, I would agree with that. I, I would say there's not an appreciable difference in the construction timeframes between the two options.
Yeah, they're close enough inside. I mean, there is difference in size, but they're close enough that I didn't think there was, but I just figured it out.
So does anybody else have a concern of why we shouldn't go with the bigger one?
Just slaying devil's advocate here, um, can we install the fire suppression system with the smaller hangar?
We could, but yes. But they wouldn't park their bigger aircraft.
Well, right, just fire suppression period. I personally believe and I think this has come out clearly with the airport board as well, fire suppression, um, and the ability for that to cover the entire airport's operation is really important, not only for growth, safety, improving our relationship, um, and the ability for the fire department to fight fire on the airport. Um, so yeah, that was just, just a question about fire suppression.
Wes, can you tell us what the cost of the fire suppression is?
It doesn't say in here.
I mean, give me a second to get it pulled together, because they haven't kind of built in two different places in here.
It's on 108. Here it is.
So it's a, and that is just for the interior of the building. The tank was in a separate spot. Give me a second to find that. And then it is, okay, about, uh, they had 80,000 for a fire service water storage tank on page 29 of that report. So 172,000 plus 80,000.
About 250,000. So if we were to do the small one, we would be at 3 million versus 3.7.
Correct.
Something like that.
Different ROI, yeah.
There you go. You might discount.
That might be stretching it.
But the nice thing is, is like, assuming that the business council is still around, because that is an active discussion going on in the state. Um, you know, we might be able to get like a business council partnership on this as well or something like that, or a SLIP. Participate.
This would be a, this would be a significant economic driver. I mean, we're just talking hotel rooms, possible jobs, fuel sales.
Uh, it's everything that makes the airport survive even better.
Sure.
There were two pilots in heart and soul this afternoon for lunch.
So I think, um, my thoughts on this are it would be short sighted to not go with the bigger one for a couple of reasons. Number one being how much extra we can make based on the larger jets sitting in there. But second of all, if we take that spot and put a smaller one in, then you can't put the bigger one in that spot. And we only have three spots. So I think we need to go with the bigger one so that we're thinking for the future.
So we're all good with the bigger.
Mm-hmm.
Do you need a?
I appreciate motions on this stuff. I, I will say.
Oh, you don't want to. Point eight.
I do appreciate your, you guys asked me to spend 3.7 million dollars.
All right, but I have a motion. Can I have a motion to direct staff proceed with the, um, option B of the, of the hangar discussion?
Move that we, um, direct town staff to proceed with option B for the new hangar construction at the Pine Dale Airport.
Second. Move by Councilman Seba, second by Councilwoman Boyce to approve and move forward on option B at the KPNA hangar discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, as opposed, motion carries four zero.
Yeah, super excited, yeah.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I meant to to bring it up. I haven't got to talk to all the, it just didn't formally go to the airport board in discussion. I spoke with Riley.
Airport board is approved.
We talked a lot about fire suppression. We talked a lot about the providing the ability for growth looking forward. So with not talking about this specifically, um, that flexibility piece was really important.
Riley felt confident that the, this was the direction the airport.
So I would ask that Wes and Abe, that as you're moving forward on the design, that you clearly think of how the fire suppression can be used both by the Sublet County Unified Fire, as well as maybe make certain that there's plans so that the piping could immediately go to other location, which is an obvious thing. But if that costs an extra $10,000, please do the engineering for it. Not that that's what I'm saying, Wes, but, uh, let's just get it done and design from the start so we don't come back and do a, a changeover on this. Okay.
Wes, do you, Wes, do you, um, anticipate speaking of change orders, your architecture team? With this fire suppression design, how are we, we probably don't have that in our scope of work right now.
We don't, and I factored that into the design team estimate of that larger option. I think it's, uh, uh, on the grand scope of things, it's not a ton for the design. I want to say it's like 10 to 15,000.
All right. Thank you, Wes. And you said you'll have this built by next, uh, July?
Yes.
But the goal is, is in, have it built in 2026. So I think if the next steps is probably going to be to get that C Mar onboard and get going on that. And, uh, and that'll help, uh, kind of soak up a lot of schedule compared to a traditional design bid build.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just, um, is the FAA have rules on, on what gets priority? If you, if you designate a building as anger, it's fire suppression and suppression. Just because I'm personally in a negotiation with Trump, on Trump, which is one, it's easy to get. And I mean, I want that on the hangar. I want to make sure my hangar gets priority if there's a fire.
The FAA, yeah, the FAA, I don't believe.
Has like a priority?
Now, you're, no, because the FAA, it would be, it's essentially a privately, if you will, held hangar by the town of Pine Dale, who's not private, but you know what I mean? And it's open to lease to whoever wants to lease it and we can sign a five year lease on it with net jets. Now, if President Trump or someone of that caliber were to fly in, then there would be a security concern that would probably, pun intended, trump, you know, maybe a lease agreement and we go to Flex Jets and sorry, say, sorry, we have Air Force One, we need to slide this in right now. And Flex Jets would probably be like, yes, okay, we agree. But yeah, there's not going to be a, oh, so and so's airplane is more important than so and so.
No, it's, it's the weird coincidence where there's a fire in the background across the street, it's on fire and shit, can we also use that?
Oh, well, we, so we will have the ability to refresh the tank. So the tank is going to be storage water so that it can be immediately dispersed in an instance of a fire. Uh, as, as soon as it begins to be dispersed, it will automatically begin to be refilled by the well that's on location. It will just take us a couple hours to refill it. So, you know, I think if there was like a house on fire and a hangar on fire, I mean, God forbid we ever face with that, but obviously Shad Cooper will show up with some water already. And then, you know, we'll probably tackle first the airplane and then send some water over there as possible, so.
So bringing that a little bit further is, would it be better to be able to, I don't know, roll out two things?
Well.
Fire suppression so that you have more of an ability.
Mrs. Gillette, if you wanted my, if you wanted my wish list, my wish list is.
And fire suppression really wasn't that much out of all of that.
Well, you're Jane Q, you're Jane Q citizen tonight. So this is what the mayor would like to do is the mayor would like to run a water line out there from the town of Pine Dale and get it so the bargeur actually could tap into our water and start lowering our water and sewer costs. Because our, our capital cost, our capital cost for the water and sewer are $50 million. And whether that's 1,200 people who use the water or whether it's 2,000 people that use the water. But if 2,000 people use the water, then it becomes a lower cost per month to you. So we would like to actually extend our service. And if we brought a water line out to the airport, it could serve the airport, it could serve a possible fire center, and it could also serve possibly residential use in the. We have a lot of water.
What was what I'm hearing through the negotiations is that the cost of fire suppression is still there compared to all customers. I mean, I mean, more so how, how would you reduce fire suppression?
Yeah, and that just is going to be like, maybe it gets included on the, you know, the current FBO and stuff like that. So, yeah. All right, let's move on to the next fun discussion. Speaking of water, shallow water.
That was a good segue. Well done, Amy.
Mr. Mayor, Council, 20 minutes, shallow water main project. Uh, change order number two, this is a reflection of those soft spot repairs that we, we kind of, we worked through on Forts Avenue. This is documentation of those. I would like to point out on the project, it looks like we're going to come on under budget on some of our underruns on other items. And so though this changeover increases the contract amount, I fully anticipate that it will be, change order three will be decreasing the final amount to 0.5 or 0.1. Um, I don't think this is going to be a major, um, outside of where we thought the project was going to be. So that is good because everything else is coming good. Soft spot repairs work really well.
Looks good.
They were supposed to, and then it rained 12 hours on our backs.
Wednesday. Because it's. Yeah. So it's pretty well.
I have a motion to approve change order number two for the shallow water main project.
I move that we approve change order number two for the shallow water main project, soft spot repairs by Westwood Curtis Construction in the amount of $51,600, bringing the total contract price to $2,522,110.
Move by Councilman, Councilman Koseba, thank you. It's like, glad you seconded it. And second by Councilman Swafford to approve change order number two for the shallow water main project, uh, in the amount of $51,600, bringing the total contract price to $2,522,110. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, as opposed, motion carries four zero. Oh, 301.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought that Julian.
He just didn't give me the.
Yeah, good job.
Yeah.
All right, item six, Redstone ninth addition.
Mr. Mayor, this is for the six flexes and the five six flexes on South Forts Avenue. Uh, we are working towards getting building permits ready for that, but that is kind of pending final deed restriction in the meantime. I did tell them that we can issue water and sewer permits, which allows them to do the utility work in the right away while the weather still permits. Um, get them out of the right away before, in no day, in no way, uh, in no way does it kind of insinuate that they would, uh, uh, get a building like this, not to follow all the laws and rules of giving a permit, but it's all lining up. It all looks, I mean, there's months of work behind this thing. So I think we're in the position to approve all of that. Um, they have requested that those meters be installed on, in the interior of those six flexes, which we support on any building that needs fire suppression so that we can protect our fire suppression line. So water is always moving, that fire suppression, and then it's needed, it's not frozen in February. So this is a request for that water meter aside, same conditions apply to the last one we approved on this.
Any questions?
My only thought is should this, should we make a change to code that would allow this on buildings that need fire suppression so it don't have to keep coming?
Yes.
Until that comes.
Can we put it on the list?
If we always put fire suppression, allow the domestic to tee off in the building. I just, I would pay for a fire suppression needs to go and it's been frozen for two months and no one. It's stagnant for 15 years.
I have a motion.
I move that we approve a waiver request for the installation of domestic water meters to the interior of the building. Um, a waiver of chapter 160 through 15. Subsection 8.7, I think, is how I would say that, um, of the town code for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 14 of the Redstone ninth addition to the town of Pine Dale with the listed commission, uh, conditions. Do I need to, okay.
Second. Right, move by Councilman Swafford, second by Councilwoman Boyce to approve a waiver request for the installation of domestic water meters to the interior of the building. A waiver of 160-15A dot seven, the town code for lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 14 of the Redstone ninth addition. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, as opposed, motion carries four zero. All right, next item on the agenda, industrial siting. And people say, what is industrial siting? Industrial siting is that when, for those that don't know, is that when a major industry moves into the area, they calculate the cost to the surrounding towns of a 90 mile radius, as it turns out, something like that we learned. And so, um, then they assess a certain tax that will be then divided, um, by the, the local authorities represented within that 90 mile radius. So we had a meeting, uh, with Sweetwater.
Based on the impact of construction.
Based on the impact of construction, thank you. Um, so this is a helium plant that's going in south of Marbleton or Big Piney. Um, kind of in between Big Piney and La Barge.
Is it closer to La Barge?
Yeah. Still within Sublet County. Um, long discussion. So Younta, Sweetwater, uh, Lincoln, Sublet, we're all there. And, um, Younta is going to take like 0.5% of the, the amount. And I think Sweetwater, so part of the problem is that you only qualify for industrial siting if you have a fifth penny in place. And so they are putting together two MOUs, which, uh, one which would include Sublet County and one which would not include Sublet County. Um, to give you an idea, we're talking about something in the amount of.
Numbers. 14.7?
How, how much?
It's 14.7 million.
14.7 million, that's right.
To Sublet County as a whole.
Yeah, to the whole. Yeah, to the whole, it. And so without Sublet County, the money goes to Lincoln, it goes to Sweetwater, it goes to Younta, Younta's going to keep the same. Um, with Sublet County, we get about, if we get 50%, they did boom, bumped it up to 50%. Um, then, um, uh, they then, we had a meeting within Sublet County and discussed how much would go to each community. They're using something called the Huff Model on the statewide side. According to the Huff Model of the 7 million that would be coming to Sublet County, why, Sublet, Pinedale should get about a million because it's based on calculations of housing and leasing and all this kind of stuff. However, in the discussion, um, it was proposed that Pinedale get 375,000, Big Piney gets, or. I am playing on my, oh, I have that Excel spreadsheet. I was like, I know I have it somewhere here. There it is.
So.
Pinedale, uh.
368.
Yeah, Pinedale gets 368 and then, um, the other would get 1.9. Is that all right?
I have 1.3, well, basically 1.4, 3.99. So 1.4 for Marbleton, 1.4 for Big Piney, 368 for Pinedale, 368 for Piney Airport, Sublet County Hospital District, 1.1 million, and Sublet County, 2.7 million.
So in those discussions, I agreed to those numbers. Um, just so everybody knows, I told everybody to go forward. Um, we are going to have, we have to also justify where some of these expenses are. We're planning to use the money for like, um, the 368,000 for some improvements.
Cost of airport.
Cost of revenue. Um, and you're all sitting there saying, wow, Mr. Mayor, not a very good negotiator. It's because, I'm happy to tell you that the Marbleton Town Council just approved putting the fifth penny on the ballot in May. Um, so in my mind, getting the fifth penny is worth it. And quite honestly, let's, let's admit it, Pinedale is going to see probably less of this impact than Big Piney, Marbleton, and La Barge. So I'm perfectly fine for them to get the money. However, they are all agreed to put the fifth penny on the ballot. So the, um, Ed, we will need to do a resolution, um, that is a similar resolution between us and Marbleton and probably Big Piney.
The language has to be identical.
Yeah, and I, I already have a draft version and saying, and saying from La Barge is drafting something as well. So we can talk about that afterwards. Um, but the Marbleton Town Council did vote and approve to move forward on a fifth penny. La Barge, uh, Big Piney is happening next week. And honestly, it's significant. Um, it means, um, now I get into lecture phase, so kick me under the table if I get too luxury. I'm sorry, guys.
There's a.
But I feel like I'm talking to an audience of people who don't know. So currently, right now, in the state of Wyoming, there are four pennies that automatically come. There's the fifth penny and then there's a sixth penny. Sixth penny is for special projects like the PAC or some road you can't do, school you want to do.
It would go away once.
You can't get the sixth penny until you have the fifth penny. And the fifth penny is voted by the, um, by the individuals. Part of the problem that we face every time we go to Cheyenne and we go to Slib and we ask for money for water or wastewater or something, is they always ask us, are you taxing? Are you raising as much funds as you can? And the answer I have to give is no, we're not because we don't have a fifth penny and we don't have a sixth penny because up until now, nobody has approved it. This has impacted Sublet County, probably the county commission was less than us, but Marbleton, Big Piney, and Pinedale have all suffered from it. Um, it's one of the reasons we have more loans than grants for example. Um, currently, what happens is 69% of the four pennies goes to Cheyenne and 31% stays here in Sublet County. So even though we are bagging the kill here, 69% goes down to Cheyenne and then they dole that out to us. And every time we go down there and we ask for money, they're like, boy, you guys are always asking for money. I'm like, just let us keep more of what we have. The fifth penny, however, is 99% stays local and only 1% goes to state. So the calculations are that a fifth penny would be the equivalent of four pennies. So currently, the town of Pinedale gets.
For local government.
For the local government. So locally, currently, we get about 1.2 million on the four pennies. In the town of Pinedale, the fifth penny would give us an additional 1.2 million. So our budget would double. Marbleton's budget would, revenue would double, Big Piney's revenue would double, and so would Sublet County. So everybody's revenue would actually double. Um, we did the numbers just on the helium project and it's something in the neighborhood of $16 million. So if there was a fifth penny, just based on the sales and use tax of what they're going to bring, the equipment they're bringing in, we're looking at just $16 million alone that we could earn on the fifth penny, um, not considering everything else.
That's, that's not even considered. And I know you would already come.
So is it not a, um, for education purposes, just so I'm clear, um, it's not a county on the ballot thing? It is each individual town has to put it on the ballot?
It will be a county ballot. So.
We can push the county to.
So the proposed, so there are two ways to get it onto the ballot. One way is the county commissioner to vote and approve to put it on there. However, we have one or two county commissioners. You don't want the voters to be able to vote on this. But the other way is that at least 60 or 70% of the local authorities approve it. So if Marbleton and Pinedale both vote, it will go on the ballot and we're proposing the month of May. So we probably tie it with the Pinedale. We have to get it done before July 1st so that it lines up with the industrial siting and then it would be applying applicable that next fiscal year. So we suspect that all three towns will approve this because there's a lot of money on the table that's going to be coming in, um, just from the project. It does have to be revoted on in four years. So it doesn't stay permanently. It does go away. There is a sunset clause. Um, and so that's kind of the direction we're taking, so the towns would vote on it. That would give us the funds to do additional. So as everybody knows, we've had to reduce our chip ceiling significantly. We actually were not able to chip seal on the entire part of town because we didn't have the funds. So Fund 10 would actually have a lot more money that we could do a lot more things that we weren't wanting to do, um, capital improvements, uh, on town lunch, town lunch party, for example. Or South Jackson. I mean, that could be possible for a housing, but we're going.
So in theory, yes, I'm in favor firstly. Secondly, how do, I guess, we, those in this room that would get quizzed on it, somebody goes to the grocery store, somebody goes to buy things in town, is it a straight sales tax? How does that?
So there are currently 53 exemptions. So food is not taxed.
Sorry, that was a bad example, but my point is someone.
Be clear. So if you were to buy, you know, if you were to buy a brand new Dodge, pick up their $50,000, you're going to pay an extra $500 tax. I mean, that is a true statement.
Okay.
But we cannot, in any sense, lobby or advocate for the passing of this on the ballot. However, as we are discussing in the Wyoming Association of Municipalities, the difference between education and advocacy is a very thin molding. And so we can educate people to say that with an additional 1.2 million, this is what the town of Pinedale could do with that money. Um, this is how would mean for projects that we can do. Um, so we can educate, but we can't advocate. Um, you know, ideally, citizens and people will vote for it and nay, um, and then we would be able to, um, move forward with it July 1st. I will also point out, so that would mean an increase in our budget next year, well, fiscal year 26, about 1.2 million. The state legislature is also changing that ratio that I told you about, 69-31. They're now discussing changing it to 61-39. However, the 8% difference would then be treated under the Madden formula, which is what they use to calculate the direct distribution. The direct distribution has historically been somewhere about 105, 120 million dollars every biennium. And it was given by the state legislature because they took away the food tax and said, we've taken away, we've exempted these things. So therefore, to make it up to you, we're going to give you 105 or 120. And every two years, it is an absolute battle in Cheyenne to get them to approve. The governor went back for the local communities and to be fair, that's counties and towns, and we got 140 million. So the math was done and that, that 8% under the Madden formula would be the equivalent of about 155 million. So we would not actually see a direct jump, um, 8% more on our sales and use tax. We would actually get pretty much the same amount we get right now, which last year we received 250,000 on the direct distribution. We would probably didn't get 270,000 on the direct distribution because there's a slight increase on that money. So we would see a little bit of a bump, um, but not much. Now, towns like Riverton, for example, we've seen the numbers. And if we were to go straight to sales and use tax, Riverton, I think, Orlando would lose big time. They need the, um, they need the direct distribution. So, um, this is a balance between what big cities and, so Pinedale is like number 19 in the state, right? Isn't that what it is? I think we're the 19th largest town in the state, something like that.
I don't remember that.
Top 20.
We're further, it's, it's actually fairly high. Maybe not 19, maybe 29. I forget the exact number. There's a nine in there. So anyhow, we're actually fairly high. So sales and use is good for Sublet County. We do well with sales and use increase and not the direct distribution.
Mr. Mayor, some of the, you know, math that I've showed just on like fiscal year 27 budget. If the fifth, if the, if the fifth penny doesn't pass, it's anticipated that the helium plant will bring about an extra million dollars in sales and use tax just to Pinedale over the year 27 and 28. So a million each year of profit, it's a three-year construction profit. I don't know if that would materialize. I mean, it's 750 million dollars of construction materials plus labor. It's like a 1.2 million dollar product. Uh, but if, if the fifth penny were to pass, instead of having a $2 million fiscal year 27 general fund, the town of Pinedale would be around a $4 million general fund for our current million dollars now. Because you wouldn't just double your current million dollars you're getting from our standard sale of the new stacks, but you have that extra billion of construction coming in. In their project, it's the extra fifth penny put on all of the construction materials.
So we would be at 2.4 plus an additional two from them.
Yeah, basically. So there's essentially, that's like, that's the range of costs that are kind of at hand. Obviously, the voters will have to decide if they want to see if they're paying tax in Sublet County or not. It's always hard. I mean, your hotels, restaurants and, um, goods, not, not groceries, but visual, and, and industry are what are paying most tax. Um, every, I mean, there's only two counties in the state. And actually Park County, I thought it was. Not Park County, but it is Park County.
It's Park County, yep.
So, which is crazy to me that two tourism-based economies do not have a fifth penny, but that's, that's who know that. The, the impact money has to be used for impacts. This isn't just a cash handout. We have to present our projects and our costs, just like everybody else. Most people are in the industrial siting committee for discussion and decision in October. So they will vet everything that everybody puts in and then reallocate funds and push funds around and do different things because they will not give you money that is not tied to the impact of the project. Except you can't say, well, we haven't got to take care of this for 20 years. We'd like to take care of this money. That is not impact. It has to be tied to the, of what is at hand. So to me, the easiest one is Sublet County. Obviously, they own the road. They have the sheriff's department. They have the fire department. They have, yeah, I mean, all of those things are very easily justified. It'd be my opinion that if, if Sublet County cannot, if the smaller municipalities can't justify it through the industrial siting committee, that we push those costs on our county in a way that they can.
Even sure the sheriff could find some use for.
Yeah. He's probably put the same.
So anyhow, that's where we sit. Um, if council is agreeable, I would like to bring the resolution to put the fifth penny on the ballot at the next town council meeting, assuming that we can coordinate with Marbleton and Big Piney on the wording of that.
I'm supportive of it, I guess. Um, and we've, we've been talking about fifth penny for probably as long as I've been on the council, probably longer. Um, and I do think it's important to underscore what, uh, Mr. Pierce said in that we are one of two counties in the state that does not have a fifth penny. And the fact that we may be, we may stand to lose, um, a substantial amount of revenue from this industrial siting, um, I think is, it's important for us to consider not only the potential loss in revenue if we don't do the fifth penny just in sales and use tax, but also from, it, it, it would be unconscionable if we didn't pass this and all of this industrial siting money went to Lincoln County or Sweetwater County, even though the facility is in Sublet County. Question for you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I assume I know the answer, but there is little to no chance that we will see the county initiate this being put on the ballot. This, and that's why we're moving with this.
Yes.
Approach.
I mean, we've talked to the county commissioner too, that we think it's the right of the voters to always spoist their opinion on that. And one or two of them said they don't even want to put it on the ballot, let the voters speak. Which I think, no, I, and if the voters voted down, the voters voted down, right? I mean, that's, that, that's what it's there for. Um, but I, I would prefer that we, you know, so this is our way. And I think the other thing that I think is nice about this is we have been discussing this for a period of time. And I think Big Piney and Marbleton are both realizing that there is an advantage here. I mean, there are streets in Big Piney. I mean, Mayor Voss was talking, I mean, just the money they can get on the fifth penny alone would actually be able to pave one of their streets. So this is money that actually can make real differences in their communities as well as our community, not to mention the industrial siting perspective of it. So I think, I think, I think everybody wins. And I think the challenge that we have, that quite honestly, I am now arguing on a regular weekly basis with our state representatives, is I don't think people realize how expensive it is to run a town. They just don't know. I mean, people think, I mean, we are not charging, going back to Mrs. Jolene's point, we are not charging the right fee for water and sewer. Our water and sewer bill should probably be $90-plus dollars a month.
I'm going to dig grass everywhere.
And that's one of the reasons we don't do it. But we are partially required by state law, I mean, it's kind of the gray area, but we should be having funds set aside as amortization reserve to replace our 50, 75 million dollar water wastewater. And we're looking at putting the new wastewater facility into the town of Pinedale. So if that were to all break, um, we have to pay for it. And the state is currently, there are 420 water systems in the state of Wyoming. And our current estimates alone are $2 billion to repair all the water systems in the state of Wyoming. Um, nobody's got that kind of money. So frankly, this has got to be paid for somehow or another. Um, and this seems to be a really easy way that really isn't a big lift on our citizens per se. It's rolling high. If you go back. Park, Cody, yeah. But everybody else does, and many have six and seven pennies. So we are.
Just curious, why, why are you not on the ballot? I need to watch the back door to get the, the fifth penny to go. I'm not a fan of extra taxes. I'm a huge fan of the fifth penny.
Right.
One of those advocates out there. But why has it taken this long to get started with it and been coming on board with Jordan with Pinedale to force this on the ballot? It doesn't, I'm curious. Was it just a $700,000 to give up on the industrial siting and pushing over the act and went, oh gee, let's get this fifth penny.
But more than that. I mean, you think they're going to get like 1.3 million, right? 1.4 million and more. But I think, you know, part of it is, I mean, we, again, it, it, it's partially education and I think we can be better at it. Is that people just don't realize how expensive, I mean, to pave a road, Mayor Voss said, what, a million bucks to pave one of his roads?
Yeah.
Nobody knows. I, we just approved 2.1 million dollars for Court Street. I mean.
Right, why didn't they have any of this dollars? Free this conversation? I know it's.
Yeah, because I think most just don't like the word tax, right? And I think this, it's a tax. We don't want to increase tax. Some people have turned around and counter argued and said, well, this is going to be an unfair tax on the industry now. And now we're taxing the industry more. But what happens more than likely is the edible oil and chex will change a little bit and the mill levies can change with the county. So by the time we're done, the oil and gas industry probably won't be paying necessarily more because of this. They'll actually go back and renegotiate a couple other things so they're paying about the same amount. So I think in general, just people are anti-tax.
I think mostly it comes from buying $50,000 dollars and all of a sudden they're going to pay $500.
That's right.
It's not a commercial, so it's buying literally really an extra three cents.
That's right.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
It's the big purchase.
But I think, you know, and I think that's the difference between Marbleton, Big Piney, and Pinedale as well is that, you know, we, you know, we have more visitors coming here. We are the, the county seat. We, we carry, and county commissioners forget this sometimes, that, you know, the town of Pinedale is, we don't get any county funds for sidewalks or roads or anything. And yet every county resident comes into this town to go to the post office, comes in, drives on our roads, uses our facilities. And we don't have a means to get, collect money off of that to pay for those things. Our staff has to go and deal with anybody who's got 23 license plate, not just people in Pinedale. So it just, it's one of those things that we need to be better at. But I think this is a tax issue.
It was the same concern with the lodging tax.
Yeah.
In the past, when it comes up on the ballot, because it says tax, it's always a little iffy.
Which is true.
I mean. What's that?
What is the current?
Um, it's the.
Seven percent. Seven percent. But five of, three of that state and four that's local.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, again, is like, I think people know, like, I'm paying an extra penny and now Bloomfield just got chip sealed. And now I got a brand new water. I mean, if we're irresponsible with the money, then the taxes shouldn't be approved, approved, right? But if we're actually using the money and squeezing every penny to get as much done as possible, like spending $3 million on a hangar is a lot of money. like, spending three million dollars on a hangar is a lot of money. But if, for the next forty years, you make five hundred thousand dollars a year, that's twenty million dollars revenue that the town of Pinedale is gonna see through a hangar. That's smart use of money. And so I think that people can say, oh, you're not just a bunch of bureaucrats who are just spending our cash, but you're doing it wisely. So I think that's what we can be better at, and make sure people know that we're using their money. I mean, we all pay the taxes, but anyhow. So is everybody agreed we can stick this on the next agenda? All right, let's move on. Ordinances and resolutions. First up is the Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five, or as we're saying, rates and fees for use of the airport field. This is partially in response to what we saw with their latest fire work out there. Thanks for coming.
Thanks, guys.
Abe, do you want to just plan us for the changes?
The changes include the late-use agreement fees for firefighting deals reporting that. And a definition of late-use agreement right above it. So like, right above the table, where the table starts, you'll see the definition of late-use agreements. And then there's the windows there, we put in the US War Service piece in our latest agreement. This just allows us to implement it quicker from a town staffing standpoint and et cetera. And then there was another change in there, and it was in the fueling, sorry, I'm reaching over eighties, it's a little weird. Inside of fuel, we had a jet A-based aircraft in the wing rate. That was originally a buck thirty in the wing, and as I was reviewing this, I realized it was just gone. So we, I'm not sure, it must have been one of our past revisions dropped a lot. So other than that, those are the pretty basic changes that you guys will see. And I know this went to the airport board, that discussed the late-use agreement, and it was concluded this time to town council.
Okay, sir, motion.
They did not discuss the fuel, but that was something that was pretty long ago, which is somehow dropped.
Were we still charging it?
Yes, we have been charging it.
Okay. I move that we approve Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-Five dash fourteen, a resolution setting rates and fees for use of the airport, Ralph Lynn's Field for the town of Pinedale.
Second, moved by Councilman Swappert, second by Councilman Deceva, to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash fourteen. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four zero.
Just Mr. Riley.
You're done, you can go now. We talked about hangars, we talked about airports, yeah. All right, next resolution is Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash fifteen. This is the resolution designated the legal newspaper for the town of Pinedale as the Pinedale Roundup. What Callie's been waiting for, I'm assuming she's still on it.
She's here checking out the news.
This is, news is happening right here.
We're making news.
This is it. I have a question, assuming there isn't any discussion since we-
Yeah, I'll read it. I move that we approve Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-Five dash fifteen, resolution designating the legal newspaper for the town of Pinedale.
Second. Moved by Councilman Swappert, second by Councilman Voice, to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-Five dash fifteen.
That's right.
Designating a legal newspaper for the town of Pinedale would be the Pinedale Roundup. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four zero. You're back in business, Callie.
Yay.
You have, you have been, yay, you're our paper again.
It's the reason I'm in town, so I wanted to, sorry, I wanted to jump the gun and make that one.
I, I figured you were gonna be someplace else, wasn't for this procedure?
No, 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 the news, the roundup is the reason that I am in.
Oh, okay, I thought you were gonna put this resolution, that's like the-
We'll get the roundup next week. I've got something I gotta go out.
Don't do it on my behalf, do it because-
All right, moving on. Next item on the agenda are department reports, beginning with the municipal court. Any questions? Next, the animal control and municipal code enforcement. I saw that we have skunks in there. Nobody mentioned that today.
Oh, I catched the smell in my house quite a bit.
I haven't seen any around my house.
Oh, I've smelled on the machine.
Of course, I'm like, long haul COVID, so I don't smell it anyway.
I saw it was burning.
Oh, not smoking. Smell something, yeah.
Smoke, yeah.
Any questions on the ACMO report? Okay, next, Public Works, H three. Always a few things going on here. Abe's just the overachiever.
We just gave him more to do.
I know. He loves it every time. I'm like, I got one more thing. He's like, let me finish this.
I think my report next week was to say no more. Give you updates from the residents that you-
He wanted to spend money. We, oh, that's it.
Anything, anything to add, yes?
Yeah, I, I just would like an update on where we're at with water.
Yep. Uh, what do you mean the shallow?
At the lake. The lake levels.
Oh, the lake levels. The last text I received is, I believe, everybody shut down at this point. All the ditches are shut down, and there's about just a hair under eighteen thousand acre feet inside of the lake at this point in time.
I think the one that's, like, if you go across the dam, that other one was still running as of the weekend.
Okay, I can find out. I don't know for certain. The last update I got was last week, and they were just a hair under eighteen thousand acre feet left in the lake. And I got an email or a text from Pine Creek Ditches Association that they were shutting down, and they gave the date. So I'll figure that out and keep pressuring where pressure is necessary to protect it.
Was there, did they ever figure out who was-
Seventeen point two.
Utilizing over what they were supposed to?
No.
H operator? Okay, did that, and that didn't-
Could anybody tell you exactly where the water went? The answer is, there's other people out there that could probably tell you better than I, generally speaking, where it went, but no, no one can account for the water.
That's true. And it didn't bleed into our, our rights?
Yeah, I mean, we have eighteen thousand acre feet. We did use a little bit, so it's right on the-
Those, those are's.
It's used at this point, so anything not owned by the town is pretty well used up.
Anything else? Any other questions? Abe, anything you want to call out specifically?
There was a slight delay in the shallow water main project. It was supposed to start paving today. It's a three-day paving project, inter-set job. I suspect they'll try again tomorrow. They gotta have forty degrees of dry, that means what they gotta have to, forty degree, forty degree ground. So I suspect they'll try again tomorrow, but if not tomorrow, it'll be Wednesday or Saturday, Friday.
They came by and talked to me, and they are just pushing everything back one day, so it's supposed to start tomorrow.
So that should really start looking nice out there. We should be piecing that pavement back, and then we will issue substantial completion on that project and get it advertised for final painting and final completion next week. And as soon as they're done paving, they'll be coming back and cleaning up the shoulders areas and tying in everybody's driveways with clean rock and gravel in most areas that are necessary. Antelope will be going around trying to make sure that everything is tidied up to like conditions or better of what everybody is accustomed to. We have a couple of areas that's gonna take a significant work for drainage, like right where the project begins, is kind of the intersection of Porch and Channing, that east side, not too far up. Councilman Voice's house, there is a pretty good hole in the shoulder there. Water is gonna be, it's just gonna be a giant puddle on the road. So we got a fair bit of work to do in some of those areas to clean it up. But try to get that cleaned up in a lot nicer than it is currently. Let's see, the shallow water main project should be-
Right in front of my house.
Wrapping up soon and be done. Most of the projects that we have going, like construction, we are nearing the end, which is fantastic. That's where we need to be, because it's September, and getting, getting everything tied up. The chip seal project out of the elementary school is all swept up, and I was given the schedule that Wednesday they'll be doing fog comb strike on, on that project. They, we did kind of have some discussions over striping. I don't think we're gonna stripe Garrison Drive. It's not a highly-used road, and before it had a dashed yellow line down the middle, which makes no sense. Middle of a town, to have a dashed center line that says, implies that you can pass. So we thought it'd be better to not stripe it, just like our other local roads. So yeah, Bloomfield Avenue, of course, we will strike, because that's four-way, it takes a little bit more, but we're, we're not gonna strike Garrison. Other than that, we're still waiting on some, some grant news. Hopefully, we hear back on state streets and roads for all at some point in the near future, and then-
Do we have an estimated date for that?
They said October, November. Hopefully, here soon, because that will initiate our next session. And then obviously, the thing that we have to have prepared by tomorrow is our impacts for taking to the county for the industrial siting portion of the project, which we're thinking snowplow, poison, a little bit airport for lifeline purposes and cost of governance. Because cost of governance is like a home run, is what they intend, that is what they stated. This is how much per citizen it costs, and the Huff model says this is how many citizens should come to your town based on this project.
So it's that-
This ties, this equals this much per year.
So that's the base, whatever you mean.
It's like a start there and do your other impacts beyond that.
Well, they sometimes just use the Huff model a lot.
And that's just it.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Travel on tourism?
Yeah, we welcomed a new member, Debbie. Debbie Muscias. That was our revenue out of the packet. Yeah, the revenue's on the packet, but not out of whack entirely. We think there's a bigger delay since the state's involved a little bit more than they were previously, so. We are, yeah, everything pops up new, we'll watch it.
All right, and the final department report is that we have successfully completed our audit. It passed. Yay. Me and Maureen did a great job of kelseying, so. That was another federal audit, right?
Yeah. We don't do all the federal audits.
Ninth federal audit or something like that. No, I, I, like I said, when I travel around the state and people find out that we've done like nine federal audits, they're like, what the heck are you doing? We're doing a few things. Anyhow, so that is good news. All right, I think we're nearly there, everybody. Then we get to executive session. Next item is routine business.
I move that we approve the bills for September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of five hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, paid with checks three one seven eight four through three one eight three one.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Deceva, to approve payment bills for September twenty-second, five hundred seventy-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-three cents, checks number three one seven eight four through three one eight three one. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next item is going to be payroll and benefits.
I move that we approve payroll and benefits for September thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Moved by Councilwoman Voice, second by Councilman Deceva, to approve payroll and benefits for September thirty, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four zero. Next item is going to be executive session to discuss real estate. I do not believe there's any action. Callie, we have no action. We're just gonna break out and go away.
Thank you.
Yeah. I move to end our executive session. This is a real estate.
Second. Moved by Councilman Swappert, second by Councilwoman Voice, going to executive session to discuss real estate. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're laughing now.
Mr. Mayor, since there'll be no action, we're gonna end the online meeting.
Aye, that's fine.
I think they got stuff.